I would like to call the village board to order for Tuesday, July 27, 2021. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski?
Here.
Trustee Paul?
Here.
Trustee Kubaki?
Here.
Trustee Zerbal?
Here.
Trustee Krieger?
Here.
Trustee Flukie?
Here.
And trustee Williams will be a little late.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I need a motion on the regular village board minutes from June 22, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. Limited. Oh, that one is closed. Oh. Okay. Sorry, I have a mix up here. So we'd also need a motion to approve the closed minutes from June 22, 2021.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state name and address. Limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody out there that would like to comment on anything not on the agenda?
Yes, make reserve parking for me when there's a ball being hit. I'm sorry. I knew that was coming.
Okay. Reserve park will, staff, we need reserved parking. We did, I did call them today and told them that there was a meeting and they did have a young man out there, but he was at one end of the parking lot and people were coming in from the other. So, anyway, sorry about that. Okay, anybody have any other comments? Could you, I'm sorry, I should have had a net, name and address, but that's a net. Could you state your name and address, please?
Michael Elan, 383 Alden Circle.
Okay.
Just curious.
Could you come up to the mic, please, just so they have it recorded?
I'm wondering as to when the, the trail that goes from, on the, on the west side of the Fox River over to, yeah, brought from Broadway over to where it is paved right now or blacktopped. I'm wondering when that will be finished. Cause I've seen, we've moved in down on Alden Circle and I've seen people fall on their trail and, because there's big rocks. And just wondering when it's maybe paved.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Doug on that one. Doug?
Yes, that, that portion of the trail will be getting paved next spring. What's happening right now is the village is working through the potential of putting a bridge over Ashwabanon Creek. And the landing of the bridge would be at Ashwabamay Park and at the southeast corner, if you will, of Alden Station. And that, where those landings come for that bridge will determine where we can tie in with the trail. If we would pave the trail right now, as you can imagine, when we construct the bridge, it would tear up a good portion of the trail and have it to be redone.
When would the bridge be going in?
Bridge, if everything goes well, I think is a spring, spring construction. So the trail would follow right after that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to number seven. Written communications and/or announcements. Seven A, we have National Night Out next week. It's Tuesday night, six to nine. We have 12 or 13 different addresses that are having National Night Out. And I encourage everybody to get together with your neighbors and create your own National Night Out event if, if you don't, if you don't have one in your neighborhood.
I'd just like to mention, I'm going to be hosting National Night Out for the first time this year. So if those of you that are in my ward, if you have your own National Night Out, I will not be able to stop in and say hi. I'll try to remember that next year and get out there. Um, the other thing I'd just like to mention is, I'd like to recognize Don Nowman and his wife Janet, and they hosted National Night Out in our neighborhood for many, many years. And he just loved hosting National Night Out. And unfortunately, Don passed away last year, so I'm hosting it this year, unfortunately, because Don is no longer able to do it. And I just wanted to let everybody know and publicly thank him for all his years that he did host National Night Out. And just let him know that we're going to miss him this year.
Is, was that the one that was always up on Thunderbird?
Yes, right on the corner.
Yep, right on the corner. Yes, I went there. I've, I've tried, every year we've had anywhere from 11 to 13 spots for National Night Out. I have tried to make every one of them and have never succeeded. I usually get to about nine. But, so if I, I start at one end of the village one year, I start at the other end of the village the next year, so hopefully I'll get to more this year. But I end up jibber jabbering, so I don't get to too many. Okay, moving on. Number eight, action on the consent agenda. Eight A, action on operators license. Eight B, general fund financial report, June year-to-date. Eight C, investment report. Eight D, budgeted expenditures. And eight E, department reports. Anybody have questions, comments, or I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carried. Number nine, public hearings. Nine A, public hearing regarding a floodplain zoning map amendment request for floodway at Alden Station. Joel?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. This is a public hearing regarding a requested floodplain zoning map amendment. This request was made by the village of Ashwabanon to reflect the FEMA-approved floodway boundary modifications for the Alden Station development. So this is being pursued by the village. The public hearing is in regards or in accordance to village code as well as the National Flood Insurance Program regulation, but by and large, this effort is more or less administrative. So FEMA, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources have approved this change in, in floodway boundary modifications. However, we as the village have to manage and administer that floodplain zoning. And so a part of that component is for us individually to amend our own map to reflect those modifications and changes. When the floodplain zoning map was first devised in the early 2000s, FEMA and Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources used aerial photography to determine those floodplain elevations. As part of our effort to redevelop the former Schneider site into what is now Alden Station, we had McMahon and Associates complete an actual survey of the site to determine actual elevations of that floodplain and floodway areas. And those are more accurately defined in the map that's presented in your packet and on the screen. So with that, that's really kind of what we're doing, is just more or less following through on our obligation to amend our map as it relates to floodplain and floodway management. And at this point, we are able to conduct our public hearing after due and proper notice.
Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this item at the public hearing? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing since there's no one to speak for it or against it.
So move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine B, public hearing regarding a floodplain zoning map amendment request for flood fringe L O M R dash F at Alden Station. Joel?
Again, a very similar item in relation to the, the previous public hearing. This one is in particular to a letter of map revision for Phil that was brought onto the site for Alden Station to allow for the redevelopment of that site. This particular map amendment deals with the flood fringe boundary versus the floodway area. And again, like the prior public hearing matter, this requires a public hearing in accordance to our village code as well as the National Flood Insurance Program. And again, these items were previously approved by FEMA and the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this zoning map amendment? Anybody here who'd like to speak for or against this zoning map amendment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close this hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten, action items. Ten A, action on ordinance 07-1-21 regarding a floodplain zoning map amendment for floodway at Alden Station. Joel? You're the man of the hour.
And bear with me, I'm trying to perform four different roles tonight, so if I'm a little slow, it's because I'm trying to stay organized. But essentially, this, this action item is related to the first public hearing that deals with the floodplain zoning map amendment. So if there are any questions from the board, I'd be certainly happy to entertain those at this time.
Aaron, it's, uh, Aaron.
Good job.
Joel. Wrong one.
Joel.
Uh, it's just a matter, just a paperwork deal, correct?
Right. It is really just more, more or less us updating our own maps for our records so that we can make sure that our maps match that of which was approved by FEMA and the DNR.
All right. There's no other questions, I'll move to approve the ordinance 07-1-21.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 07-1-21. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten B, action on ordinance 07-2-21 regarding a floodplain zoning map amendment request for flood fringe L O M R dash F at Alden Station. Joel?
Again, in relation to the public hearing held under nine B, this action item relates specifically to the front flood fringe area of what is now called Alden Station. Again, we are obligated to amend our flood fringe map in relation to what is approved by FEMA and the Wisconsin DNR so that we can administer the zoning code appropriately in that area. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Same question, Joel. Another paperwork to conform with the L O M R dash F at Alden Station.
Correct.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 07-2-21. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten C, action on a request for a third wall sign for Gerber Collision located at 825 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA dash 467. Joel?
Joel's not here.
That's right. Okay, I'm going to pull it up here. So the applicant has requested a third wall sign. This is for Gerber Collision located at 825 Mike McCarthy Way. The request is for a non-lit third wall sign on what would be the south or rear elevation, which will take up to 35 square feet. In addition to that note, it is well below the 20% of wall face maximum for that particular elevation. So I believe if I hit the right button here, I will get you to see my screen again. Again, wall signs may be allowed on three sides of a building with specific approval from site plan review committee, taking into account the physical, spatial environment, traffic patterns, and overall integration into the neighborhood and surrounding environment. The surrounding land uses include the Green Bay Distillery to the east, the Home to Suites to the south, across Borvan Avenue, BAN's Fire and Safety to the west, and PMI Blue Parking Lot to the north. Site plan did review this previously this month as well as planning commission, both of which had previously recommended approval for the third wall sign. Staff recommends approval of the third wall sign with the conditions that it remain non-lit and not to exceed 35 square feet for the south side of Gerber Collision. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Being on the site plan committee and the plan board committee, we had no problem with this, so no other questions, I'll move to approve the third sign at McCarthy Way, parcel VA dash 467.
I just have a quick question. Do customers?
Can we, I need a second, and then we can ask questions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, Trace.
Do customers come in from the backside? I drove around there, it looks like it's, it's rock. And then I was wondering what the need for the sign is, if customers are actually coming through that way?
My understanding is that, that they have a service store there on that side of the building, and so they're trying to direct traffic into that service store.
Around the back.
I think it's more for deliveries.
Correct.
For deliveries, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the third wall sign for parcel VA dash 467. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten D, action on Class A beer slash Class A liquor license request for Amba India Bazaar LLC, DBA Amba India Bazaar. Now, before we-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recuse myself from this and probably best to step out so everybody's comfortable talking about this and making their decisions on this.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Before this goes, I, I do want to say that I did have Chris call the owner today just because I was wondering where the liquor would be stored, because I know that if you have other stuff in your store, you have to be able to lock the liquor once the store closes. And I do have a diagram here, if anybody wants to see it, of where the liquor would be stored, and the open hours are from noon to eight, and they're closed on Mondays. So I just wanted to pass that information along, because I know that you have, there is a stipulation that you have to be able to lock it. So. Okay, Chris, any?
The owner is in the audience, if anyone has any questions.
Does it have to be locked just outside of sales hours, or does it always, like, when it's closed, the store's closed and it needs to be locked for the evening as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know we reviewed this at Public Works and didn't really see any difference between this or, like, fresh time or anything else, so we went ahead with it. So I will move to approve the Class A beer and liquor license request for Amba India Bazaar LLC.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Class A beer slash Class A liquor license for Amba India Bazaar. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. He's going. Okay, ten E, action on Class B beer license request for Blades and Boards LLC, DBA Blades and Boards. Chris?
Just so you're aware, the owner is in the audience. So if you have any questions on this request for a Class B beer, the manager's also here to answer any questions.
When this, when this first came through, I want to say I was a little concerned because it was the mall. However, it's not like a key, we had somebody one time ask for liquor at a kiosk in the mall, and we turned that down. But this is not a freestanding kiosk in the mall. So this is, this is to, it's like the axe-throwing place that's up on Ridge Road, so.
And I know that was one of my concerns at Public Works, mixing alcohol with axe-throwing, but the owners definitely assured me that they, they monitor that and basically try to limit participants, you know, not so much the spectators, but the participants to two, to two beers.
Over the top.
Yeah, yeah. So they're, they're very conscious of it. You said, I believe you said there were two other locations that you have like this?
I do, I've been doing this for almost five years.
Could I have you come up? If you're going to answer, just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. My name is Rachel Raoul, 2101 Rosecrans in Wausau. And yes, I have two other locations, been doing this almost five years. My first one is in Wausau, my second one is in Ashgash, and we're over the top, safe, very family-friendly.
Could you enlighten me on what you do at Blades and?
Blades and Boards?
Yeah.
Sure. So we're an axe-throwing facility first and foremost.
Well, another one.
The difference with us is that we're very family-friendly, so we love to have that mom and dad and their 12 and 14-year-old type of environment to come in. We have axe coaches. Every one of my team members are trained on safety and all of that. I do have actual professional axe throwers that are your coaches. They teach you how to throw, and then they stay with you and monitor you as you're throwing. It's like the new bowling, if we're being honest. There's games to play, all of that type of thing. So it's, it's really just good family fun.
I don't think I'd bring my wife there, though.
I bet you she's better at it than you are.
Undoubtedly, she throws things very well. No, no, she doesn't, she doesn't. I'm getting in trouble here.
I was going to say.
I have some of the same concerns, or the concern that Jay has, axes and alcohol just don't seem to mix very well with me. And also I think having alcohol accessible at the Park Square Mall is an, an issue for me as well. So I probably will vote to deny the license.
So it's just beer? It's not hard?
Beer and cider, right?
Right, it's not hard liquor at all.
Yeah. I just, you know, you stated it's a family-oriented facility, and I see it's, you know, families and I get all of that, but this alcohol is just, you can be there.
Solely because when I allow food to be brought in so that it's cost-effective to families, so if they want to bring in a pizza, or they want to bring in their PB and J from home, dad can have a beer while, you know, they eat their pizza, that type of thing. It's, it's not a bar, and Nicole can attest to this, I get very vocal when put into that category, because I'm not that category at all. It's, it's solely just another option for, like I said, a beer when they're, you know, just like you would have a beer at a bowling alley or a beer at Friday Night Fish Fry with your family.
Do you have al, or beer at your other facilities, did you say? I didn't catch it.
Both, both locations have it.
And where are those located?
Wausau and Ashgash.
Okay.
When the first one came to the village, we had a problem on two things. Alcohol was one. I believe they limited it to two drinks per person, I think it was. The other thing that we brought up, which they did take consideration of, is when you throw the axe, there was no shield in the back of the, the back of the person as he's going back to throw it. Do you have shields to protect the audience watching?
Yeah, so I'll tell you that we're referring to Green Bay Axe, is that correct? Is that the?
On Ridge Road.
And I'm unsure of their address, but I'm, I'm certain it's Green Bay Axe you're talking about. The real difference between my locations and any other axe house out there is that I individualize the lanes. A lot of axe houses will put two targets together, and they don't individualize. I individualize not only each individual lane with chain link and wood so that they're in above as well, but behind, so your throwing distance is 12 feet when you're throwing a typical S-wing axe. We extend that 17 feet. So there is plenty of space, and never is a spectator allowed in that area or around where that would be. So we have a huge distance between where the thrower is and where the spectator would be. So that's the biggest difference between Green Bay Axe and, and my facilities.
Okay, okay.
I've been up, oh, go ahead.
I have not heard of any complaints or anything from the one on Ridge Road, so, you know, as long as you watch your alcohol and you've got people protected, I don't have a problem with it.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a new sport, new sport, something new.
I've been up on the one on Ridge Road a few times, very well-run, very safe feel to it.
Yes.
I've never had an experience of axe-throwing before I went up there.
Yes.
And I would guess that anybody that owns or runs one seriously is, the safety is first and foremost on the top of their minds.
Absolutely, it is. We're not, we're not sustainable. They believe the same thing I do. We're not sustainable as a sport or a growing sport if we don't take it seriously and control the environment. So absolutely.
I was rather surprised, actually, with that. And each time, it was the same experience. It was, I felt very, watching other people, there was no monkey business going on. I think everybody was just in their place, and I'd never noticed anything. I, without, I saw people walking up grabbing a beer once in a while, but I think for me mostly it was sodas and-
Yes.
Water. There was a few beers being-
Right, right. Because that's also not their sole, I mean, that's not what the business plan is, is built off of. It's just, it's, it's just not. And it's safer than you think it is, isn't it, once you experience it?
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Yes, yes.
Tracy, one of the things I'd like to say to, to address, you know, your concern, I, I kind of felt the same way about the beer, you know, with the family stuff in the mall, but we have Dave and Buster's there.
Right, that has a-
Which, you know, has a full liquor license.
They have a full bar.
And so, and that is actually geared for children, so.
I was wondering, Joel, if the chief had any impact input on this, if he was asked or had any comment or concern with it?
I believe he was asked at Public Works and Protection Committee, and I think the same sentiment was shared then, that, you know, they're just concerned about throwing weapons and just making sure that the operation is maintained in a safe manner. I understand that there's a two-drink limit to individuals participating, so as long as that's being maintained, then I think it would be, be acceptable.
Yeah, like I said, we've, we've never had an incident at either location, and it's been almost five years. There just, there just won't be. There just won't be.
Okay.
I'm just very confident that there just won't be.
Yeah, and I think you've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's the best that you can, so.
I appreciate that.
I will move to approve the Class B beer license request for Blades and Boards.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Class B beer license for Blades and Boards LLC. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ten F, action regarding requested site plan review for Nielsen Communications, 645 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA dash 56 dash 5. Joel?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Fisher and Associates is the applicant applying on behalf of Nielsen Investments LLC for a site plan review for a proposed 3,000-square-foot addition to the south side of an existing building located at 645 Mike McCarthy Way. The exterior materials that are being proposed as part of this addition are primarily metal wall panels. It should be noted that under village code, metal wall panels are required to have concealed fasteners, which are a condition of, of recommended approval for this evening. The original plan has a four-foot-high masonry wainscot applied to only the west elevation of the addition. However, under village code, and also one of the recommended conditions is that a minimum three-foot masonry wainscot be applied for the entirety of the addition. The asphalt parking lot will also be extended to and behind the addition, and will have curbing as required by code. The dumpster enclosure will be relocated to the westerly side of the parking lot amongst the existing trees. And I will attempt to get an elevation here for you, so bear with me. In case you have any questions. With that, this item was brought forward to, to planning commission as well as site plan review with the recommended approval for each with the staff conditions that are included in your packet. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Being on both committees, it, the fellow did a good job in putting this together. It's above and beyond what the original building looks like because of our newer code. So I'll move to approve the addition to 645 McCarthy Way, parcel VA dash 56 dash 5.
I'll second that.
Okay, is Gary with staff conditions?
With staff conditions.
Okay, and the second is okay with staff condition?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 645 Mike McCarthy Way. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten G, winter maintenance on Ashwabanon Trails. We're going to be having a presentation, but I'll let Joel kick it off.
Thank you.[1791.04] Just to kind of give you a quick recap, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee of the Village of Ashwabhanan has been toying with the idea of a program or service-level change for the Village of Ashwabhanan as it relates to providing winter maintenance activities to specific trails throughout the village. The predominant trails that are being considered for this review and possible implementation would be trails that kind of abut the right-of-way of existing roadways. There are a few trails that do meander away from specific roads, in particular, a trail that runs through the industrial park. But by and large, the committee is desiring to have the village consider adding winter maintenance activities to these trails to improve accessibility and recreational opportunities throughout the course of a 12-month period, rather just seasonally during the warm months of the year. All told, we're looking at approximately 10-plus miles of additional maintenance. During their review, they identified a cost of up to about $30,000 annually to provide contracted service to these trails to be maintained at a period or interval of anywhere from 48 to 72 hours after a snow event. Kyle Jagal, Dale Schultz, and Jessica Atkinson are here from the committee that would like to present some information and advocate on their behalf and the committee's behalf to include this as part of the budget for the 2022 fiscal year. So with that, I'll pass it over to Kyle, Dale, and Jessica, and if you guys want to make your way to the table, that'd be great.
Could you just all state your name and address for the record, please?
We will. I'm Kyle Jagal. I'm at 1480 Cormier Road.
I'm Jessica Atkinson. I'm at 1223 Garehart Lane.
So my name is Dale Schmitz, and I'm at 2895 Limerick Lane. I've been a resident about 42 years, and I've been on the Bike and Ped Committee about five years. And all the members are here, which is really nice to see. I don't know if they have to come up and give their names, but Annette's here, and so does Leroy. So the entire group is here. I'm going to start this off, but we're all gonna, all three of us are gonna talk about it a little bit. Joel gave away quite a bit of it, so, on my part, so I don't want to be repetitive, but I do want it to be verbatim to what the committee decided to do. The first thing I'd like to do is thank you for allowing us to even present the request. The second thing I'd like to thank, and I'm going to look here, because Rex, Joel, Aaron, Doug, Tracy, there's a number of people that helped us accumulate the information we need to make this decision. So we appreciate that, and Joel has really been helpful. So I appreciate that, Joel. I didn't recognize you when I came in, because I'm not used to the suit and tie, but.
He was airing tonight, so that's okay.
So the goal of this committee, and I think I speak for the rest of them, is to make Ashwabhan a safe place to live, play, and work. And I put play before work, because I'm retired. But, but I mean, it really is. I don't think we're any different than what you're trying to do. When I look at your strategic plan, it's, it's all about making Ashwabhan a better place for the, for the public and the citizens. So having said that, I'm gonna, I'm actually going to read a part of this, and then I may fill in in places even when you're speaking, just some things that I think you need to know. If you're not a walker, you're not a runner, you're not a bicyclist, and we all have our things that we like to do, but there's people that like to do this as well, and especially in the world today, especially with COVID last year. So having said that, winter is the time of the year where we see people walking in the street or going indoors because they have nowhere else to go. Our trails are covered with snow, making them impassable. These people are our residents, their friends, their neighbors, their family, and their seniors. This is one of the double standards of inequities in the transportation. Clearing streets of snow is a non-negotiable priority for public agencies, but safe and enjoyable routes for pedestrians in the winter have not been part of the local transportation plans. More cities are starting to recognize clear trails as an important quality of life, an equity issue that deserves public support. Ashwabhan can and should begin clearing trails during the winter months. I'm just going to add to this a little bit, and I found this just by Googling. If you go to Madison, it's part of their regular plan. They don't, they don't budget just for bicycle paths and running paths. It's all part of maintaining the roads so that it doesn't stick out as an extra cost. It's part of everything else. Now, Madison's unique compared to us, right? There's bicycle lanes, there's a lot of university people, I get that. So I'm going to move on. The request you've already heard, we're requesting that the paths be cleared in the winter. There are specific ones, there's 10.3 miles. What we're looking at is Packerland Drive, it's not very big, but you guys know Packerland Drive, West Main, the industrial park, which was the path that kind of goes behind all the industrial buildings from Main Street to Wabi, I believe. And then you have the Ashwabhan River Trail and Argani. And then the plowing map he showed you, and you actually have that, so that, do they each want, have the document? Okay. So the estimated cost, I'm not sure, did we come up with that from, did Doug help us with that, or was it going to?
I think that was based on the cost for clearing the Fox River Trail.
Oh, that was, okay. Yep. Okay. So the only thing we were going to do a little different is have the people that are clearing it wait 48 to 72 hours, which may reduce that cost, because then they're done doing their, their high maintenance, their parking lots, or whatever. They have to do over and above this. And then we were going to go to, after a snowfall of greater than two inches, the delayed requirement for clearing normally required within 24 hours may result in a cost saving, so I just said that. Do you have that, Joel, where you got from the other locale or municipalities, what they do presently?
Yep.
Yes, so you should have it on the screen now, and then the board members should have the same spreadsheet in their packet as well.
Yeah, so you're a little bit more familiar with this than I was, because you accumulated that information for us. But basically, what it's saying, right, is miles of snow and ice removal, Alway, Ashwabhan, Bellevue, DePur, Hobart, and Swamaco. And it looks like the ones that are doing it presently are, miles of snow and ice removal is, Alway's got some, right? We do zero, Bellevue does approximately 6.95, DePur does zero, Hobart does 4.25, and Swamaco does 2.63. And this is great information, but I guess, I don't want to be a follower, I'd rather be a leader, which you guys, I mean, in this community, right, I have a great appreciation for what you do, because there's a lot of decisions that have to be made, what's going on in this community right now. So I'd like to hopefully be the leader in this as well, and not say, well, Bellevue does it, and DePur does it. That's not the way I want to look at it. What's best for our residents in Ashwabhan in the winter? I'm going to give you one scenario, and Jay's probably familiar with it, but, so, Limerick Lane, I use timber quite a bit. When you go down timber, and I got to think of the street that's just there, but there's just a slight bend, right? And when you get to that, you, you have to watch out, because if you're typically a driver, when they drive a car, and there's no stop signs for quite a distance, they lean to the curb. They always lean to the curb. Now, that's in summer. Now, let's take winter, and they grade over by us, they use a grader, and the guy that's operating a grader, he doesn't know exactly where the curb is, so he's not getting right to the curb. And I understand that, because otherwise, he's taking the grass off the guy's yard, because he's on a curve, right? It's really difficult, because now you're out here in the road, and you're, you're watching for these cars coming around that corner. You have a new subdivision, Highland Ridge Estates. You want to talk distance on roads without stop signs, it's a long ways, and there's a lot of curves. So those people are going to be walking out in the road as well, so they have a path, right, right on sand acres, that they could get to, and then go from there to the other paths, West Main, and then the industrial, Packerland, and those areas. So I'm going to be quiet and let you guys take, take over from here.
Jessica, can you pull? Thank you.
I'm not loud enough.
We want to hear your.
That's a first. We want to hear your voice. All right. So the reason for the request, over the years, the committee members have received many requests from the citizens about getting these trails cleared. With the pandemic, like you referenced earlier, there are significantly more people working throughout our community on bicycles, walking, getting out just more for that. We're seeing more and more people getting out with transportation as well, as we're having, the apartments going up, there's more people that are getting through, going to different bus stops, using more public transportation, more bicycles for getting to and from work. So as that's going on, as well as just the safety concerns that he already referenced, we're seeing more of a need now than there ever was before. So initially, when the trails were put in, we know that was the discussion, and it made sense back then not to clear them, but we're seeing a noticeable change within our community, and that that's what they're requesting. It isn't safe in our winter months for a lot of them to go, especially the areas that have the roads that go alongside our trails, so like Packerland Drive, West Main Avenue, Wabi Lane, those are almost impossible to walk on by foot during the winter while they're being plowed, without having the trail plowed next to it. It's really not a safe route for our pedestrians. With the new vision of the village, we were told as the, you know, Ashwabhan wants to be inclusive, attractive, award-winning community, featuring safe neighborhoods, thriving businesses, and exciting cultural opportunities. One way we feel that we can create that vision is by improving and maintaining our public infrastructure and facilities, and that includes our roadways and highways for our pedestrian bicyclists as well, and maintaining these trails in the winter will definitely help work towards that new vision of the village.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick paragraphs, and we'll wrap this up. The community survey that was done earlier this year, I believe it was in April, as part of the strategic planning process, addressed some of these issues, and unfortunately, there was a small, only a small number of residents that responded, but things that were, were important to the residents that did respond, snow plowing and ice control on sidewalks and trails, 84% of the respondents felt this was either important or very important. Availability of sidewalks and walking paths, 85% felt this was important or very important. Available to be of bike lanes and bike paths, 73% said important or very important. And there were some comments, and we kind of heard one of these from the gentleman at Alden Station, please consider making bike trails and paths clear in the winter. Another person said, maintain the trails and parks that are in place now before adding additional ones. There are places along the waterfront that need attention to lights and trail maintenance. Someone else said, I've lived in four different states, and Ashwabhan is the best-managed city we have lived in. That said, I think it would benefit from an attractive downtown development with walkability. It's a great place to live, but you never know driving through the string of strip malls. The village, when I moved here in 1967, so that's almost 54 years, was primarily single-family residences, some duplexes, young families, probably a stay-at-home mom, you know, the people left the village to work and to shop. That is not the way it is anymore. The village has changed tremendously, the demographics have changed, people are older, they don't have kids, they have dogs now, they're all walking, they're dogs. I think in my neighborhood, there's more dogs than there are kids, so.
I'll second that.
So, and so I live on Cormier Road, and I have the sidewalk in front of me, so I see dogs and people all the time, and most people pick up after the dogs, but that's something else. So I guess what we're trying to say is, past, past village boards have done a lot of things to improve the village from the way the village has changed 54 years ago to the way it is now. They've been very responsive to the needs and the requests of the citizens, and I guess that we ask that this board be also responsive and seriously consider these changes and put the funds for the snow plowing in the budget.
Okay.
So part of this, I just, just one, just one other thing, the Village of Ashwabhan started to use VNLs, right? Variable, or.
Visually, yeah.
Visually, yeah, narrowed lines, so we don't have sidewalks. If you go to, I own some rental property in Howard, and it's near the YMCA, and they have sidewalks, so people have a place to go, right? In fact, I get notices when the tenants don't shovel the sidewalks, right? So we're different, and we know that, but, but that's history, we, that's what we decided to do. But at least this would give people another place to maybe run or walk in the winter and get off the main drag. So, just that, you know, not, it would just be nice for people to be a little bit safer than what we are today.
Okay, I'm going to entertain any, any thoughts or comments from the board, but before we do that, I shared this with Tracy the other day. I have been in contact with the Village of Hobart, because the Packer, the Packerland Trail is slightly challenging. A third of it is in the Village of Hobart, so that would be their responsibility, so that would have to be one of their budget items. Also, about salting the Packerland Trail, that about 80% of that trail does fall on the Oneida Reservation. So I felt that they should be notified if we were going to, we're going to continue going forward with salting that trail, because it is on reservation land. So I've not heard back. Tana Agiri from the Oneida Nation was going to bring that to their business committee, and I have not heard from Hobart. I don't know, I said I don't know if this is going to be a moving-forward item, I don't, I don't know where it's going to go, but just so that you're aware that, that this.
Yeah, we appreciate you doing that, because, yeah.
Yeah. You know, I've been on the board now 16 years, and it was always the feeling of the board, we didn't want to add sidewalks, because we plow 10.53 miles of safe routes to school, and we don't have the in-house personnel to do anymore. So that's why this would have to be a contracted service, everybody knows that. But, yeah, I just wanted to say a few of those things.
What was the village, Joel, maybe it wasn't you that stated that, but was it Bellevue? Somebody switched back, there's areas of sidewalks where they used to plow, and they turned it back to the public to have to shovel it. I'm sure they had some, some tough conversations, but it's, and that's, once you give something, somebody, to somebody, how do you take it away, right?
Right.
But at some point, if you have enough sidewalks, you'll have to. You know, it'd been nice if we could have had some sidewalks in Highland Ridge, but we don't. So I understand where we came from and where we're at, and I appreciate you doing that, because we need to know that it all fits.
Right.
Oneida and Hobart. Hopefully, if we decided to do it, Hobart would follow a leader.
Well, Hobart does their, their trail that's out by Centennial Circle, they do that one, but they do not do their Packerland Trail. And they, they have, they have no desire to plow it. They told me that outright.
It's a real short piece, too, but you're right, it's right.
It's a third of it.
Yep. I know what you mean.
Excuse, Leroy would like to speak.
I was going to say, Leroy's been.
Yeah. Yeah, I need you to state your name and address for the record, Leroy.
We can step back. No, no, just stay here. Leroy Volk, 1411 Ponderosa. I've been a village resident here since 1970. And I just want to say I've been a biker since 1980 or something like that, but this last year, I was injured, so I had to do a lot of walking. In fact, that's what I, I had to do. That's what Vance Sators told me to do, and now I'm biking. But since then, I mean, I have noticed that there are so many more I have not noticed. Years ago, there were never that many walkers or bikers on Packerland. There weren't. But now that I have been out walking all the time, it's unbelievable, I can't believe that there are that many people that use that trail.
Yeah.
It's, I just had to say that, because I mean, it's now, now I've noticed it, you know, before I never really paid any attention, I guess. But now that I'm out there walking on that trail, I've noticed there are a lot of people that walk on that trail.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. Another thing I'd like to say, you know, we do have National Night Out next Tuesday, so I encourage all the trustees to go to any events that are in their districts and talk to the people. That's, that's why I am not, I'm probably not going to make it to many of them, because I'll end up talking too long at, at certain ones, but I encourage everybody, and I encourage anybody watching these meetings, contact your. your trustees. Let them know how you feel. Shoot me an email. Shoot an email to your trustee. I want to know how the people feel.
I, I have a couple of comments. Number one, many of you know, I walk constantly. I mean, we are worth a minimum of three miles, normally five miles every single day. It doesn't matter what day. Not, what I would like to see is, I would like to see this to go back to your committee. I am not confident in that 30K estimate. I'm all for that this is something that I think we need to look at as part of the budget, but I don't think 30K is enough. When I was president of a church in Alloway, we would spend 10K on 100 parking spaces in a, in a winter. So I think 30K is very short. I just think it's going to be more than that. And I would like that estimate to be done. You know, let's get a cavillion or somebody who, that's what they do. Let's get the right estimate so we kind of know what we're, what we're shooting at. And I'd also like to have included in there the salting of that because being a winter walker, many times, we end up on the roads and stay off of the sidewalks purely because of the ice, because it is so dangerous. And my wife had a fall, a very serious fall, that ended up with brain bleeding and everything, where she slipped on ice in the winter. So I feel that what we do, let's do it, but let's do it safely. And I'd like to see the, get the, let's get the right estimate. Let's make sure that salting and sanding's included because like Doug, it's not always salt. Sometimes you need sand because it depends on temperatures and all of this. But I'm very much in favor of it, but I think we need to do it correctly. One thing I would also like the committee to look at is what about the parks? Many of the parks, and Rex has spent a lot of time in the, over the last few years, to actually get access through the parks. Smith Park, Pioneer Park, Valley View has it, Waterford has it, Sand Acres has the trail. Let's get those included in this so that people that, where they're walking in the summertime and, and other nicer times of year, let's make sure that if we're going to do this, let's find out what is, what does that package cost us? So I'd really like to see that kind of included in. Mary already touched on Hobart and Oneida. The only area that I do question is the industrial park. I love that part of the trail. But I also know in the winter, that's going to be a real challenge to keep that plowed, keep that cleared. And if I have that correctly, there's a post at every street that gets crossed.
You're right.
I think it's going to be a challenge to plow it. Now, obviously, that's, you know, that's something that the third party can come back and say, yeah, this stretch is going to cost us X amount. I would say that'd be the best way to get that estimate. But I really feel that'd be great, you know, for your committee to kind of go back and get some more numbers. Let's get an actual couple contractors to come in. I know Doug can help you with that and.
Get a bid.
You know, and get, let's get some real bids.
When you had that done, Jake, can I just ask you at the church? So what kind of equipment did they use?
Yeah, they used.
Was it heavy payloaders?
No. A lot of it was just, was trucks. Yeah, it was just trucks, pickup trucks with plows in the front and that. It was just hours. It was just the hours spent that was always costing us. And if the, if the winter got bad, then, you know, you, you ended up blowing out your budget.
Sure.
And with any snow plowing, you know, that's the way it's going to be. But I think, I just feel that to get, to get a better number, I think to get it into our budget and for us to be considering as part of our whole budget, I think that's a very fair thing. But I think we, we need to get a better, better number and a better grip on it.
Jay, I appreciate all your comments, and, and I understand walking. I think some of these numbers were derived from costs that the city of Green Bay pays to clear the Fox River Trail.
Could be.
County.
So, so we didn't just pull them out of a hat.
And I didn't think that you did. I'm just saying, I think since we're.
But certainly.
When we're going to have somebody private do it.
We'd be happy to firm those up for you.
I think that, I just think it would be best to have somebody, let's get some.
Yeah, you got to answer for it. So, yep, absolutely. I understand your position.
Madam President, just as a point of information, you know, these trails, when they went in, and the board should be commended, the board back then, and you guys should be commended for your work in, in looking at this particular situation. But when those trails were in, it was specifically stated that they were not to be plowed during the winter months. And that was part of the sale of these trails. They were to be mowed and otherwise maintained for spring, summer, and fall use, but not for winter use. And that was specifically discussed at, at that point in time. You know, I'm in favor of interconnectivity throughout the community. You know, I support it. I supported it way back when, when these trails were put back in, were put in. And we, the staff, had to fight to put them in because we were, we put them in for Hobart as well to get the job done because we thought it was very important for the community to, to be able to move around, biking, walking, rollerblading, whatever the case may be. And the village board, in their, in their, in their wisdom, did the right things, and they put these, these trails in, and these trails have benefited the entire community. You're right, in, in the summertime, Packerland Drive is used to a much greater extent, I think, with COVID situation. People have gotten, gotten used to maybe exercising a little bit more, which is a good thing for everybody. That being said, I think looking at it in the budget process is the proper time to take a look at it. And we do have a lot of different costs associated with running municipal government. Some of the, some of the things I'm concerned with, I was, I've been a runner all my life. And then my old runners become bikers or swimmers, I became a biker. And with that, the concerns I would have would be ice, drifting snow, and what I call cloud snow or slop that gets thrown up by the plow trucks. It is going to be expensive to keep those, those roads and trails in real good shape. And if you're going to do it, you're going to want to do it right. And if you're going to want to do it right, it's going to be expensive to do it. So with that, those need to be taken into account. And I, I agree with Jay, we need to fine tune those dollar amounts. You know, in winter, people do snowshoeing, people do cross-country skiing, they, they join the fitness and health facilities, they use home-use stationary bikes, treadmills, ellipticals, all the above. You know, sometimes you can't be everything for everybody because you're going to fail dramatically for everyone. And so with that, I think it needs to be considered. But based upon what I see as a runner and, you know, walking out there on Packerland in the middle of winter, it's no picnic. I take my dogs for runs in the conservancy, and I'm going through two feet of snow up to my knees, walking through fields. But you, to see people out on Packerland in the middle of winter, I don't know that that's reasonable or rational to consider. Those things need to be looked at, and I think it needs to be looked at during the budget process.
And that's one of the reasons we're here now, is we know the budget process is coming up. So we wanted to just be ahead of the game a little bit. So that's, you know, we're not asking for a decision tonight. We're, we just want to start the discussion tonight. I hear a lot of people talk about how, how difficult, how challenging Packerland is, and we certainly understand that. We certainly, we certainly have discussed that a lot ourselves. But let's not, let's not consider only on Packerland. You know, there's a trail in Argon, a nice trail by the park. Sand Acres has a wonderful trail. You know, there's, there's a lot of nice trails. Let's, let's not focus solely on Packland, but we're going to recognize Packland as a problem.
Maybe there are other trails that lend themselves to this more easily and more cost-effectively. In other words, you know, sometimes you have to compromise to, you know.
And you're exactly right. And we just, we haven't thought about that, and, you know, so I guess we are just.
I think you hit on it, the interconnectivity is huge. So I, I always bring this up to them. My youngest son lives in Wauwatosa, came back from New Orleans. New Orleans is a whole different place, right? Everybody's got porches, sidewalks. You're friends with everybody because they're sitting on the porch, you're talking.
You run a little faster there, too.
Yeah, yeah. And, and their intent was, when they came back here, they were going to live close to downtown. And you go down where they live, and they're two blocks from State Street, and there's a park down there, I don't know, I won't remember the name, but, but it is people. I mean, it, and it is so friendly, but it's people walking, it's not running. Some people run, some people bike, some people. So the only thing I want to keep in mind, because I follow what you're saying, where we started from, but I'm going to be gone someday, and there's going to be a younger person in my house, ain't going to be this old guy, right? They're different than I am. If you want them to live here and you want them to work here, you better start thinking about what you're going to do as a community. We're fortunate, right? Because we have the Packer Stadium, we have, we have all this stuff going on here. But there's also businesses here that are looking for employees. And them employees, Virginia, I'm trying to think of the, I actually have, you guys might have seen it, it was in the press gazette. Bear with me. Arlington, Virginia, America's fittest city. Those who lived communities with available neighborhoods, trails, and bike paths had more ways to stay active and stave off high blood pressure, obesity, and heart disease. Big deal. Think about Apple. Apple Watch, what are they doing? They're trying to get people to be healthier. Communities with safe and open spaces where people could exercise, walk, bike, and play, ball fared better, play ball fared better, and stayed active during the pandemic, pandemic said in American Fitness, all right? Madison's number five. Now, I get Madison, I don't want to put us in a category of Madison. It's a huge university. Both my boys went there. I get it. If it ain't party, it's, you know, it's just a lot of people. So they got to have the bike paths, they got to have the sidewalks. I agree with everything you guys are saying. We need to do our homework, right? Because you have constituents to answer to. And to your point, we want to make sure it's the right thing, too, because if we're just clearing paths and nobody's walking on them, that doesn't do us any good neither, right? So we're, I think we're on the same page. We just need to get you more information.
I'd just like to mention a few things. With your agenda packet, you have letters from several people supporting the clearing of the trails. I also received two more today in regard to clearing the trails. One from Randy Johnson in the Thunderbird Trail area, so in the southwest corner of the village. And then another one from Terry and Tim Verzelt, who also live in the southwest corner of the village, sent a letter in support. I know we also have a couple other people that would like to speak that are residents, so maybe if we could open to the floor, and maybe it already is because we've had other residents speaking, but if we could allow them to speak and then let them share their experience and what they'd like to hear.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought up Randy's name. Randy's not here because he left us in May, but I think he was on this committee from the beginning. I, I believe so.
He left the committee in May, no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's my bad. Go on. You knew what I meant.
Okay. Would anybody else like to come up and talk?
Jamie should come up.
State your name and address, please, for the record.
All right. I'm Jamie Ashenbrenner, 3504 Leaden Drive.
And I'm Diane Ashenbrenner, 2349 Doran Drive.
I guess, I was kind of listening to what these guys had said back here, and I understand, you know, with the costs and trying to figure things out, you know, that's a big thing. But for somebody personally who has to go down to like the gas stations down that way, down on Packerland there for necessity stuff, because sometimes I don't have reliable transportation, and so I have to roll. So a lot of the times, and I've noticed in past, where I couldn't go through because the ends of the driveways aren't, you know, shoveled, or, you know, the chair can't get through it, that kind of thing. And I've had to turn around and go right back home. So that's the biggest thing for me is just, it, it's kind of a necessity for me. So like if I have to go get groceries from one of the marts down there, or the gas stations, you know, that kind of stuff, you know, that's right there for me. But if it's not accessible during the winter, I'm kind of, whoop, bumped into that. You know, I have to turn around and go right home. So I guess that's the biggest thing for me, is I'd like to see them just cleaned up a little bit better, you know, for wheelchairs and, you know, that kind of thing. I understand with like bikes and people walking, but this is just like something on the road, you know? It doesn't get through the snow, it doesn't get through the pack-down stuff, you know? It doesn't get through the ice, that kind of thing. So that's the biggest thing for me, is I, I would just like to see them cleaned up a little bit better, just, you know, for, you know, walkers, bikers, wheelchairs, you know, those kinds of things.
Yeah, and I think that's why I'm asking them, let's get the right number. Let's find out what that is. Because it is very important. Let's find out what we're talking about and how that fits into that budget. That's, that's what I see. Because the value of it, from a health standpoint, from an accessibility standpoint, from all, I mean, there's, there's no doubt. It's just a matter of, okay, how, how do we juggle that? How do we make that up?
And a lot of those businesses down there, like I said, are necessities for me for like food, you know, housing items and that kind of stuff. And I don't necessarily have a vehicle to get me there all the time, so that's why I wheel down there.
Yep.
So that's, that was my little, too little sense there.
I'm just here for support. Thanks, Mom.
But they've noticed, they, they've known it too, you know, having to help me get down there, and, you know, I can't always rely on somebody picking me up to go. And, you know, it's not that far to wheel down there, but, you know, just to see them cleaned up a little bit better for wheelchair accessibility versus walkers, but, you know, that kind of thing.
And she lives in the apartments right off of Main. So it's, I don't know if it's DePere or Hobart or what, but those residents in all those apartments come to the village to buy stuff. You mean?
Yeah.
A lot of families walk that path a lot.
Yeah. And I, I too, like, like you guys have said too, you know, the traffic in that Packerland walking area has definitely grown. There's a lot more walkers, bikers, people just going down the trails and the paths and.
And you're just a few blocks too far for public transportation.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't hit, I don't hit the bus stops or anything like that. I can't.
So Jamie, if the trail is not clear, do you ever take your chair out on Packerland to travel Packerland to get where you are, or would you not do that?
I take it on that kind of sidewalk, that, that sidewalk that I go down, that's the main path that I use. And I've had to several times, and I know it's not the safest thing, is I found patches of that walkway that weren't plowed. I've had to go down and go into the street just to get back up and get on, and that's, I, I can't just keep going around, it's not safe. It's, it's not safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll see you on Doran Drive, Neighborhood Night Out.
Hopefully, I'll get there. Like I said, I've, I've always, every year, I've tried to get to every one of them, and I've only ever, the most I've made it to is nine. So I'll try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to mention a few things real quick. As far as the estimate for the cost, there was a lot of good research done on that. I mean, Doug put some information together, we talked to other communities. Dr. Vetrail has cleared theirs for probably, I think it's been three or four years now, and have contracted it. So we use their numbers as well. We can certainly do some additional, but there was quite a bit done to figure that out. And we did talk, and Dr. Vetrail amount also included the salting and the sanding in their, in their number. So the number that we used included those things as a needed basis. If it wasn't needed, they weren't doing it, but otherwise, it was part of that cost that they had put together and got to us. So the other thing is, just to remember, our comprehensive plan that the village has also addresses this. And I, probably every one of you up here can agree that it's important to have our trails available and people to be able to move through our community safely. And our comprehensive plan says that, and it's part of our goals and what we're looking at for our plan. It also is obviously mentioned in the bicycle and pedestrian plan, and that's one of the goals in there as well, is to have it accessible, connectivity, and all of that. But I think one thing we need to be really careful about as we're discussing this is assuming that all people in the village are the same. Everyone's different, everyone's an individual. For example, you guys all know, I'm a huge bicyclist. My husband and I bike everywhere. We've biked across the country three times. If I would think that all bicyclists that live in the community are just like me, I would not be providing really good facilities or places for them to bike because I could think they could bike anywhere. So we really need to remember that. Steve, he's a runner. He's run for many, many years. He also is experienced. He also is experienced, so for him to run out on the road, run where maybe it's a little slipper, go out on Packerland, he's okay with that. But not everybody else is. Then you have Jamie, who needs a clear, open space for her to be able to go and get where she needs to do. So I think as a village board, we really need to keep in mind all of the people that we're serving, all of our residents that we're serving, and allow them to successfully move through our community. We have these great trails, as Steve said, they've been in for quite a long time. And times have changed. They were put in at the time saying, we're not gonna, we're not gonna plow them, that's fine. That was in the 90s, that was whenever the heck they all went in. One of the trails, we even had a DNR letter that said, we could not plow it. Rex reached out to DNR, they have no problem with us going ahead and plowing and salting the particular trail, which happens to be the Packerland Trail. So we really need to think about, our times have changed, our vehicles are bigger, people are driving faster, people are less attentive when they're driving. And to have a space for people to walk safely, year round, is the key to keeping our residents healthy and happy and keep them here. And someone else mentioned, Jessica's mentioned several times with her business, they have a lot of younger people coming in to work at her business, or at the community, or the company that she works for. And they're younger, they have, they may not have cars, they may have to take transit, they're walking, they're biking to get to work. And it's just really important that year round, we allow people to be able to do that. And the research that the committee has done, and I want to thank all of you for doing, putting all your time and energy into it, and really appreciate it on staff as well for getting the information that we needed to bring the package forward to you, so. It is a well thought through plan, it's been something that they've talked about for many, many years. And I would just really like the village board to consider it and we can certainly research it more, but I think it needs to be part of the budget process and make due consideration to it to get it in the 2022 budget.
Thank you, Tracy, I, I do appreciate all the work that Bike and Ped Committee did, I appreciate everybody coming in to talk tonight. Everybody understands that this is a budget item. This is a, first of all, it's a big policy change, we've never done this. Like I said, we don't have the in-house staff to be able to do it, so it definitely is a contracted item. But our, our 2022 budget, Joel and I were talking today, I talked with the assessor, the budget's going to be challenging this year, worse than the 2021 budget. So it will, it will have to be discussed through the budget, in my opinion, it will have to be discussed through the budget issue if it's going to be considered, so.
I would like to add something real short here. In the past, you know, obviously in my ward, we've got Argon Park that's got a trail there, and I think working with Mary in the past couple of years, there've been a few residents that had wanted that plowed, and we agreed, I think starting last year, the year before.
I think the year before.
The year before. You know, we kind of pushed back on it, budget wise, but decided maybe it was the right thing to do. And I understand why we, we've, why we set up the way not to plow them, and why we've kind of pushed back on it, you know, opening up that can of worms fiscally. But having said that, just kind of thinking about things more, since, you know, I, I've been looking over the, the agenda for tonight, I started thinking about hard on it a little bit more and what really the, what we talked about since Joel's been on board about what our goals are as a village. And really, we talked a lot about what we offer our residents uniquely compared to what other municipalities don't. And, and here's an opportunity for us to offer something that's maybe not really totally unique, but it's something very useful and definitely something that's, in this day and age, with times changing. And with all the bikers, you know, the bikers with the, with the equipment now that they have, whether it's weather wise or the fat bikes on the bikes and, and runners with the, with the warming equipment, they obviously a lot more people out just in the streets in general, let alone on, on the paths. I happened to be over late last week and over the weekend down in Austin, Texas. And we went down to a walking path area, quite a big one, on Saturday morning, I think, and holy cow, it was impressive, the number of people that were using that thing. I mean, it was just between bikers, dog walkers, walkers, runners, everybody, it was, it was, it just brought a sense of community. We spent an hour, hour and a half, maybe two hours actually on that, on that trail, hot as heck, but you know, so it almost, it, it's getting me to turn almost the other way. But if we're going to do this, and I'm glad that the points that were brought up over here about really what needs to come back a little more detailed, budget wise, and, and some of the concerns of the spots that, that might not be plowable. But also, if we're going to do this, I want to make sure that the whole community is aware, if, if this goes through, if we proceed with this. I want to make sure the whole community is aware that, hey, we've got this available now, if we're going to spend the budget on it, I want to somehow be able to, to fold into this that, that our community, Ashwaban and, even if we want to go a little bit farther, but let's, let's focus on Ashwaban, that they somehow know, hey, let's, here's a park and walk. Come on over to these areas, park and walk, we got a beautiful opportunity, I want to make sure it gets used. If this goes forward, but I'm definitely, I went, just to let you know, I definitely went from pretty hard no to, you know, we've got an opportunity here and we should at least explore it.
Just so that they can hear you, Dale, could I have you talking to the mic?
So I would just say, don't underestimate your residents. There's a lot of things that I said yes to, that we have in this community, because I live in this community. I want it to be the best community to live in. We have a new swimming pool, we have, and I can't even think of it because I've never been there, where they do the arts.
PAC.
Right. Never been there, because it's not me. That didn't mean I didn't vote for it, they're putting air conditioning in all those schools right now, right? I don't have kids in school. But it's important, because this is my community, so I would say, don't underestimate your residents to increase their taxes a little bit. And I just, and I understand that you have to answer those people, I get that. But don't underestimate the people that are here, because I think the people that are here and sticking around so the young people can't buy our houses are because they love where they live. My wife and I have been waiting for them to open up that area down there, because she will not move to another area. If she's going to buy a new house, it's got to be here, well, there's no land available, well, now there is, it's West DePere School District, we don't care. Right, so I, I'm just saying, don't, don't underestimate the people that live here, because I think if they're like me, and I think a lot of them are, we love our community, that's why we're here, so.
Thank you.
I do have a quick comment and then a question. I do just want to point out that we do have a lot of owner and village plowed sidewalks already. I have heard comments before, I didn't know that people had to plow their sidewalks, I've never had to. Well, turns out they live on a school route and they don't have to worry about it, so I do think we are unique in that aspect. I, I agree with everything that's been said so far tonight. My question though is really more on the like logistics side of things, so we're talking about bringing this to budget. How, and this is just for my own learning purposes, I think, how would this come to budget? Would it be something where you would do more of a detailed RFP? And then get an actual price and that would come to budget? Or do we do an estimate and then it goes for an RFP? What would be the actual process to see what it would actually come out to if we were to go down this route? And then let's say it comes way higher than what we think, what's the process to do partial? Or how, what is, we keep saying, let's bring it to budget, but what is that process for something that's new? I guess that's where I'm a little confused.
I think, and Doug and Rex can certainly chime in on this conversation. Based on the conversation that the board has had this evening, I think it'll be imperative for us to put together some general specifications related to the service requirements for providing contracted service. And then maybe reaching out to a vendor or two and just try to get a ballpark figure without kind of beholding that, hold them to that, to that dollar amount, because at, at some point, if it is approved as part of the budget, we will likely need to go out for some type of competitive bid or RFP process. We want to make sure that they're not kind of selling themselves out, if you will, on that bid process. But ultimately, I think what we need to do is describe what those specifications are. When does the plowing activity occur? How soon after a snow event? How, how much or how often do they come back to that particular trail to provide some cleanup effort? So, Packerland Drive is a really good example, let's say plowing operations on the street side have concluded, and then within 24 hours, the requirement is to have the contractor come in and clear the trail. And so we may make that effort, but then the county comes through and conducts another winging operation or something to that effect on Packerland Drive, and now the trail is covered again with, I think it was Steve that called it roadside slop. So now we have slop again that we have to, to clean off. So we have to identify the level of service that that contractor is going to be expected to perform over that, over that period of time between snow events. We're going to be basing it, I think by and large, we have an idea of how many snow events that we have annually, based on our cleaning operations. And so, bear in mind that that can alter, we could have, let's say, 12 accumulating snow events where we provide plowing activities, or we could have to over 30.
Yeah, and that was going to be something I had said, or I was going to suggest next too, is if we do go to get maybe a more like to an actual contractor, get a little bit honed in, better budget number. I would be curious to see a light year versus a heavy year. If it's a snow year like last year, we had barely any. If it's, you know, I, I'd be curious to see what that variable cost could be, and I know we're not always going to have a heavy, but I just think that's something to kind of think about too. In when we go to, if we start kind of talking to specific vendors to get a little bit more honed in contract, or not, but what you were saying, so.
I think what we would do is certainly look at, let's say, a five-year average of snow events and accumulations. And then we'd have an average, we would have the, the low end, the high end, and then the mean between the two, between the the five-year period, and, and from there, we can kind of put together, this is what would be a low estimate for expenditure. This would be on the high end based on the high, high amounts for the five-year average, and here's our, our mean. And again, you're, just as Doug knows, snow plowing is kind of a crapshoot, if you will, pardon my French, because again, you could have one absolutely horrendous year where you blow your budget completely out of the water. And then the next year, as you had mentioned, Allison, it's a really light year, mild, and you have excess funds, you have excess materials, you have excess resources left over, so. It will take some time to massage that number if we, if we provide that service over a period of several years to, to really refine it, to understand what that true expense is.
I, I think, before Doug, before I let you talk, Doug, I think from the discussion here, the biggest challenge, and I've discussed this with Joel and Tracy and Doug and Rex, Packerland, the Packerland Trail is going to be a, a really big challenge to overcome, so.
First thing, I think we have to get Joel a plaid shirt also, because he did a great job selling it like an engineer also. I think Jay's point i- is right on. This is a, this is a big policy decision for the village. It's also a big budget decision. with budget decisions, it's level of service, it's level of service, not just on plowing trails, it's plowing roads, it's how many roads you repair, it's how often you maintain your park equipment, it's, it goes throughout the village, it's level of service. So that's, I think that's, I think that's what Jay was getting at in his comment is he isn't, he isn't disagreeing at all with what, with what's being brought forward, it's what is your level of service? I think it was Jamie that mentioned that she, she'd like to see it cleaned up a little bit better, so she can get to the stores and, and things like that. That, that level of service is a little different than 48 to 72 hours after, after a two-inch storm. A two-inch storm might not, and it's not plowed, might not be the level of service that some are looking for, and I think that's what has to be considered in this a little bit further, is just what level of service are we looking to provide, and that's what's going to drive those costs, because a higher level of service means coming out, you know, after, after some of those Wisconsin winters, you have three or four days of wind afterwards, and it might be after a snow event, four, five or six re-clearings if it, if it blows through, is that, is that the intent? Just so when, when staff goes out and gets further numbers for clarification, so that it's understood. I think that's all I had.
And hopefully we never have another April 13th of 2018.
Never again, please.
I used to go in Doug's office and say, what do you do with 18 inches of snow? Well, we found out what you do with 24 inches of snow, so. If you want to come to the mic, Leroy?
Yes, okay. You know, I've been a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, I think, I don't know, for maybe 20 years, at least that I would say. Our number one ambition at that time, when I first started, was to make things easier, safer and better for people that walk and bike, by making intersections better, putting up signs and things like that there. And what Chris said, I think, was so big and important, where he was about how the people down, where was it?
Austin.
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 How many people there are. And, and I think the biggest problem that we have right here in Ashwaban is that we don't, we are not telling the people that we have Packerland Trail, we have this trail, we have Sandakers Trail, we, we got trails all over the village and we don't, and nobody knows about them. I think it's got to be put out to somebody, put it in the paper, put it in the Ashwaban Presser or something that, you know, that, hey, we have got these trails to go on, to exercise. You know, nobody knows about the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. I often said that, you know, we go, I go on a, on a, on a bike, on a bike, and I tell somebody, you know, hey, I think, you know, you should be on the other side of the road, you know? And they, they look at me like, well, who in the heck are you? You know? I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be nice by telling them the right thing. And, and I think Chris was right about we would get people, we would get, I think it would be unbelievable how many people we would get out on them trails if they knew there were trails out there. It's my own opinion.
Thanks, Leroy.
Yeah, and I just received a request from a resident of ours that lives up by Pioneer School. And her concern is she cannot, her and her family can't cross Packerland to get to the trail that's on the west side of Packerland, so I believe Doug has talked to her. And they would like a safer crossing, so they can actually get across that road, so, you know, Leroy's saying people don't know about, people maybe are aware of it, but they have a hard time getting there, especially that Packerland Trail, to get across the road and get to that trail. So there is a desire, I think, to use their trails, and they are being used. And I think they would definitely be used year round if we opened them up.
Yeah, you know, I think we have to prioritize things though, and I, I agree, crossing Packerland Drive. Now, I think that would be an excellent project to undertake, to get more people on the trail. But I think that takes precedent over plowing in the, in the winter. I think we have to look out for the, the greatest good for the greatest number, and that's during the summer months, and that makes the biggest. I think, I think, and I've, I've talked to some Public Works people, I've talked to some people in Bellevue who have the, the trails, we have to prioritize things, that's our job, that's our duty, we're going to be short of dollars here.
Right.
You know, I think if we're going to do this, we need to prioritize things and take a look at what do we really want to do? And what part of the community do we want to serve? And I think it's our responsibility to serve the greatest number with the dollars that we have, and we can't be, we can't be doing everything for everyone. But we need to be doing our, our special things for as many as we can. But that being said, we need, this needs to be looked at very, very closely as we go forward. I don't want to put rain on the parade, but the bottom line is, is we're going to have reduced dollars in years to come, and, and that's just the nature of the beast in government. And so we have to be very careful what we, what we do, because what we do now, we're never going to be able to take back, you have to understand that. Once it's done, it's done, and if we're wrong, and we don't do it right, we ain't got another chance. And I think this village has done a good job of addressing the needs of the community to the best of our financial abilities. And if we can facilitate this, this is great. But I don't know that we can do that, and we need better numbers to find out where we're at.
Yeah, and we definitely do, I mean, we need to get the numbers that we need. And we need to look at quality of life for our residents, it's a huge quality of life. And, you know, when you say prioritize, how do you prioritize and say, okay, we're going to clear the trail here, but we're not going to clear the trail there? I know there's a lot of desire, but on the Ashwabane Trail, River Trail, there's a lot of people over there that want it, so how do you not clear that? So I think that's something we have to keep in mind too, how do you prioritize?
We do that with our snow plowing now, we plow our major routes, and we don't do the secondary routes. We prioritize, we put things in perspective. We don't do all the roads at the same time, we do certain roads at certain points in time, because that's for the greatest good for the greatest number. And that's the same thing that has to apply here, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like these trails have to be cleared first, not at all. And that's why the committee talked about the 48 to 72 hours after snowfall, so it's not high priority, it's a little after the roads and everything else are done, so there is some thought on that as well, so, but.
It needs more work, you're right.
Yeah.
Joel?
If I may, just aid in, in kind of bringing this discussion a little bit full circle, there's, there's certainly additional information...
there's, there's certainly additional information that needs to be provided to the board before a formal decision is going to be made. And we do have some time to do that in preparation of our budget process for next year. So if I may be so bold, is to recommend the board refer this back to committee, as Jay had suggested. Couple things that the committee can be charged with, with the assistance of staff. First, we need to get more specific with what that level of service looks like, you know, beyond just the 48 to 72 hours. We need to identify a little bit more specifically what that, what that means. In addition to that level of service, tie into the prioritization of what trails, and maybe that's part of that conversational level of service. Maybe certain trails get cleared and cleaned sooner or more often than other trails, and, and so there may be deviations that way to address some of Steve's concerns. And then the committee can also work towards designing specifications for a proposal, or a request for proposal, that'll tie into that conversation about level of service. And then through staff's assistance, we can go out and seek proposals from maybe one or two firms to get a more budget-conscious number as to what, what we're attempting to do. At that point, the committee can come back to the board with that information, once it's prepared and been assembled, and then hopefully, at that point, you'll be well on your way through deliberating your budget for next year.
May I add one point to your list there, Joel? I would like to see, we're kind of considering the trails for walking, biking, that. I think we've got an accessibility question, and I think there should be certain trails that maybe are prioritized different for accessibility, and I think that should be part of that as well. And again, that's level of service.
Well, with that, I'd make a motion to direct staff to do what Joel had said.
Thanks.
Here, we have a motion and a second to do what Joel said. Direct staff to do what Joel said.
It's that suit, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any, any more discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much, everybody, for
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
All of your information that you brought forward. Okay, 10H, action on fingerprint fees. Joel?
All right, I'm going to put on my public safety badge now, so we're moving on to fingerprint fees. The Ashwaban on Public Safety Department provides opportunities for citizens to get fingerprinting done, so it's not just for criminals or individuals that are being booked. This is for individuals, let's say, someone is applying for a job. Teachers oftentimes have to be fingerprinted before they can conclude their process. Maybe an individual's applying for a concealed carry permit, fingerprinting is often required for that purpose. So our Public Safety Department provides fingerprinting services to the general public. In fact, we did not provide those services in 2020, predominantly because of COVID, but our most recent full-service year was back in 2019, where we offered 272 sets of prints. It's been a number of years since our fees have been adjusted to reflect the cost of providing staff time and materials to conduct those fingerprinting activities, and so the chief is requesting an increase of those fees for citizen-requested prints from $10 to $25, and then court-ordered prints from $25 to $40. The department did receive a grant this past year to provide some additional or newer equipment and a network interface. That grant value was $22,000. So we have this new equipment, and so that's good. So ultimately, all we're attempting to do with these fees is to recover our time and material expenses for ink and activity. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
You know, a couple months ago, the Public Safety came to us with their charges for their medical care services to customers in need of medical care. We had no problem in raising the fees then. I think these fees are real reasonable within the realm of what we did for them for the emergency service, so I don't have a problem in raising these fees to the cost that they're proposing here. So if there's no other question, I'll move to approve.
Second.
The hikes in the fingerprinting as proposed.
Say that again.
I was just wondering if we would want to put a non-resident cost to it, like our ambulance, we did have non-resident, if we would want to establish a different cost for them? Just a question.
I, I don't know that the chief feels strongly one way or the other, just based on the current fee structure, but that's certainly a reasonable approach. I think Park and Rec does that for a lot of their programming. Rex, I'm not certain if you have a policy, if it's a percentage or a dollar value over, but.
Would they do fingerprinting for somebody that's not a citizen, you know?
Yeah, Park and Rec program, according to Rex, it's an additional $15.
Right.
And, yes, they do. They do finger, because there's a lot of municipalities in the area that no longer offer the service.
Okay.
So there are people that do come. Is this something that we could approve it as-is, and if he were to see a need for a non-resident price, he could come back?
I think you could do it either way. I think if the board is comfortable with adding an additional surcharge, if you will, $15 for non-resident, we would just include that as part of the motion.
I don't have a problem. I made a motion to accept it. If you want to go up another 15 for non-residential, that's fine.
Can we do it as if the chief sees fit? Or if, if it sees fit, or are we requiring it to go up $15 for a non-resident? That's, I guess, my question.
We should be specific. By leaving, leaving it to the chief, that's, that's, you really need to have a number, or else we should table it until we get.
I was going to say, just table it till the next meeting. Get his okay on it.
Somebody want to make a motion to table it?
Yeah, a motion to table would take precedence. I was part of the others.
Second.
I'll move to table this, until we get the input from the chief.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
I will say, it's a little bit weird, though, to me, that we would, if you raised that $15, that you would kind of treat the non-resident as a criminal. You might want to think about that.
Okay, well, we're tabling that till next time. Okay, 10I, review and action regarding Village of Ashwaban and Water Rate Review Letter to the Public Service Commission. Say that fast 10 times, Doug.
Review and action. What this is, folks, as, as you all know, having been through the budget process, we have a sewer utility and water utility here at the village. The sewer utility is under full purview and rate-setting capabilities of the village board. So when we do a sewer rate review, the village board decides what that rate is, sets that rate, and we move forward. The water utility is governed by the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin, so when you want to do a rate change, it has to go through the Public Service Commission review and rate review process. You see in the letter here, it takes anywhere from about nine to 14 months, that's in a, in a good year. We've completed a sewer rate review. You saw from Baker Tilly last month where things are sitting in, in both utilities, both are in strong financial position, and I'll, I'll come back to that comment in a little bit. But both of them needed rate reviews done this year. The sewer rate reviews completed, we'll be working that one through the budget process. The water rate review is just starting. The information was just submitted to the PSC, and you basically take your information and put it into their form, and it spits out a number. It isn't complete at that point in time, that just starts the review process. That was completed in July. This process actually started back in 2020. If you remember, we changed auditors in 2020. There were some timing issues getting things completed, so that, that dragged out our, our rate reviews, and, and we worked with Baker Tilly now, and another rate consultant to get these rate reviews completed, have that submitted into the PSC. But as part of this process, one of the things we can be proud of is, in both of our utilities, we have a substantial amount of money in cash at hand, meaning that's, that's something the village feels, or that we feel, when it comes to rate setting, can be used to temper the rates. If we were sitting at a zero point, you don't have a lot of wiggle room, if you will. When you have cash at hand, you're able to absorb those types of ebbs and flows. That's something we want to get in writing, get to the Public Service Commission, so we can have that discussion as part of the rate-setting process. If we don't, they come forward with their rate review, set it, and that's what it is. And we want the ability to talk to them. It's the same thing we did. Believe it or not, we've had the same rate since 2006. It's been 15 years since we've had a rate review. The rate we had has served us well up to this point. In 2006, we went down and talked to the PSC, that's when we connected on the Green Bay Water. We went down there, talked to them as to how to set the rates to make it as fair as possible for the community. That's what we're requesting again here. And that's what this, this letter is stating. This is kind of over the course of two to three years, that's what we'd be asking, is allow us to adjust these rates over that amount of time. That's how long it took to calculate all of this, allow us to do it over that time as well. There's one other kicker in all of this, and, and it's included in the letter as well. Back in 2006, is when we refinanced all of our bonding for that connection to Green Bay Water. So part of our current rate, you know, a substantial portion of that, is the rate that pays for the transmission main pipeline that connects to Green Bay and runs to our water towers, upgraded our, our backup well stations, things of that nature. That's paid off in 2026. You see in a lot of communities where they're tearing up their roads, replacing their water mains and whatnot right now, the village will probably have to start doing that in 2028, 2029, in that timeframe. So there's this window there, where that rate, quote-unquote, really isn't necessary, because the bonding has been paid off. So those are a couple points there, where we have cash at hand. We also have a portion of our rate that's going to be coming offline in a few years, where there can be this flex, if you will. Now, that is unique. There aren't a lot of communities that have that opportunity, and that's why we want to have that discussion, because it's, it's, as the layer of governments go up, from local to state to federal, there's the ability to look at things more fluidly, if you will, tends, tends to drop off. So there's a, a template you follow, and that's the template. We're asking to be able to have those discussions in this rate-setting process over the next, again, nine to 14 months. That's the reason for the letter. We're hoping you'd approve tonight. Makes sense? I'll answer any questions. That's a lot of jargon in a short amount of time, but I'm open to any questions that you'd have.
I'd like to thank you, Doug, for keeping, keeping our rates where they are. And I remember when we switched over to Green Bay Water, been here a long time.
Well, I, unfortunately, that means I've been here quite a while, too. And I remember Nubs de Clean when we connected on. He said, "You're increasing our rates," pardon my French, "a hell of a lot, Doug. You better get this right." And, and it's worked for us, and that's fantastic, and that's something the village should be proud of. Other than Green Bay, we have the second-lowest rates in the area, and that's because of the village board and the decisions the village made, and that's fantastic.
Right.
We're looking to continue that, because this rate is, is tired. But we don't want to, also don't want to make it a burden. It, it won't be, but we don't want to increase it any more than we have to, and we want to do it in stepped phases. That's what we've always strived to do here, is do it in step phases.
Yeah.
Well, Doug, based on what you've said, I mean, this is just giving us that ability to be able to kind of control our rate, be able to keep the rate down for residents and that, so that we can flex it, like you're saying, because we are in that strong financial position. But additionally, also give us that ability to kind of build up some cash for those projects that we're going to need.
Correct.
So I absolutely agree with that. I mean, I think we need that flexibility to help our residents, as well as get the village positioned correctly for the future. So I would definitely approve and motion, make motion to, I'm not quite sure how I want to state this, regarding the Village of Ashwaban and Water Rate Review Letter to the Public Service Commission.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. I had a little discussion with the people this afternoon about that. Nobody likes a big bang financially. Doing it gradually is a better way of doing it, and it is a less burden on the people themselves, so I think it's a good idea.
And again, that, that's one of those items that we, we want the opportunity at the state level to be, be able to talk about it. It isn't a guarantee, but we want to talk about it, and unless we make it known,
Yeah.
It's, it's follow the same process as usual. So that's what, that's why we're doing this.
Really appreciate that you jumped ahead and recognized that and did that for the village. Thank you.
So Doug, typically, the increase would just be one year. They would say, this is what you have to increase it for next year when you go for a rate increase, correct? So really, this letter's asking to spread it out over three years, or whatever the case may be. Do they, have they done that before? Do you think this is going to be successful, that they're going to allow this to happen?
They, they, they worked with us, and it was in a little bit different fashion, but they worked with us on the connection with Green Bay. Our rate consultants have said, a lot of communities will ask for it. Not communities, not many communities will get it. They were, they were honest with us, but they also said that a lot of those communities also aren't in the same position where we are. And I'm not saying we've got cash flowing out of our ears or anything, that's not it at all. But there is some cash in the bank, and there's this, there's this debt that's coming off in a few years, and that's where it's a, we feel it's a unique circumstance to say, hey, there is, we want to protect that money also, because we have CIP work that's coming in the future. But that's still seven, eight, nine years away, and there's this time where, you know, the pot can empty a little bit, and then fill back up, and that's what we're asking for. You're absolutely correct. They, they may come back and say, no, boom, this is it. That's a, that's a very real possibility. I don't want to lie to you. But our approach is, we, let's, you know, give, give us the opportunity. We've, we've shown over the years that we can do it, give us the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I mean, the letter is well-written, very clear, so hopefully, they'll consider it, and they'll allow the village to do it, because I think it would be a better way to do it. Like Gary said, to have a 20% increase in one year on our water rates, the residents are not going to be happy with that. So if we can spread it out, that would be great.
Correct.
The PSC does have that flexibility, whether or not they're going to use it, and which staff reviews it is probably the biggest hurdle that we have to address.
We, we just received on Tuesday, well, today's Tuesday, it was yesterday, Monday, we received yesterday the first round of questions back from the PSC. And the auditor that was assigned to us is, is a good one. So in talking with our rate review staff, they were pleased with the person we got. So we're hoping that as time goes on, there's a lot of questions right now, because it's been 15 years, and a lot has changed in that time, in the rate-making process. So they have a lot of questions, a lot of catch-up they want to ask, just so they understand. And, and we're jumping on all those questions to, to try and help this process.
You know, Doug, we went through this with the Metropolitan Sewer District a number of years ago. They had a bunch of upgrading and doing whatever they do. They had zero in the bank. My first question was, don't you people put any money in the bank for maintenance? No. The citizens got a big jump in the sewer rates at that time to do the improvements that they did, because there was no money there to, to have a cushion on. So I applaud you, Doug, for looking into this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the letter, Water Rate Review Letter to the Public Service Commission. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10J, consider, discuss, act on assignment at Bayside TAC Tiff Developers Performance Agreement for 2763-2718, South Oneida Street, Tax Parcel, VA-178-4. Tony?
All right. A few weeks ago, the village had received a request concerning Bayside Marketplace Mall. The village entered into a Tiff agreement with Tac Bayside a little over five years ago, in which there was a pay-go-Tiff concerning the development and improvement to that property, which included fresh time and various other improvements to the property. At this point, Bayside Tac is in the process of selling that, that piece of property. As a result, the prospective buyer, purchaser is As a result, the prospective buyer purchaser is desiring to assume the TIF agreement, and so both parties are requesting the village's consent, which is required by the developers' agreement. Staff has had contact with both parties. The subsequent, or intended purchaser has submitted the TIF application paperwork. The village staff has reviewed it and has no issues with the purchaser assuming this TIF agreement. It is a pay-go as well, and given the improvements to the property and the performance under the TIF agreement and the pay-go, really, there's no risk, minimal risk to the village for this assignment, and therefore recommend approval of it.
Any questions?
Tony, is this one of the agreements in order to complete the sale, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Just as a point of information, Tony, is there a percentage payback on that TIF? Do you know if there's a percentage on the pay-as-you-go?
It's 10 years or a cap of $750,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the assignment of the TIF Developers' Performance Agreement to Twin Peaks Holding LLC.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve the assignment of the TIF Developers' Performance Agreement to Twin Peaks Holding LLC.
For discussion, I talked to Tony about this, but the driveway that comes out of this development, going out to Oneida Street, the north driveway by Olive Garden, has a major hazard there that needs to be taken care of. You cannot see onto Oneida Street when you're entering the roadway there. So I realize we cannot add this to this agreement, but I would like to at least acknowledge that at a board level and make sure that this new owner is aware of this and ask them to work with our forester to take care of this issue as soon as possible.
We've had that issue with them before. Tracy, we've been in contact with them in years prior also.
Yeah, and I know you have. I know Tim's looked at it, and Rex and Joel, I think, have been involved as well. But it definitely, I don't know if any of you are familiar with trying to get on Oneida Street at that intersection. It is tough, and someone's, you know, someone's going to get hit. Tim is willing to work, and Joel and Rex have worked with him on the village taking a lead on it and trying to get some of those trees out of there so you can actually see. But he just needs a new contact name and a number, and just to have it recognized at a village board level that this is an issue, and this new owner really needs to look at taking care of this ASAP.
Any more comments? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10K, Consider Discuss Act on Release of Right of First Refusal for Tax Parcel VA-228-14K-48-C at 3185 South Ridge Road. Tony.
Okay, last week, I had received a call, an inquiry from a title company that was getting ready to close with respect to a commercial real estate transaction at 3185 South Ridge Road. As part of the title work on that transaction, a right of first refusal came up that the village has for a variety of properties on South Ridge Road. The village had released a similar right about four years ago on Ridge Road as well. It's a fairly dated old right of first refusal, so they were requesting that the village release this right as part of the title work and anticipation, excuse me, of the closing set for this week for that transaction. The village has no objection to releasing that right of first refusal, and would just ask for approval of the release document for this transaction.
Tony, didn't we have the same thing on some other properties in the village?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. I'll move to approve the right-of-way resolution at 3185 South Ridge Road.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to release the right of first refusal for 3185 South Ridge. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. 10L, Action on Sherwood Forest Boardwalk Bid. Rex.
As the village knows, we have cleared out the north side of the Sherwood Forest Channel, including around the pond, to put in a new trail approximately a quarter-mile in length. The trail would go over two boardwalk areas. This bid would be for the modular boardwalk and the installation of the modular boardwalk by the manufacturer. We have planned next week our crews to go into Sherwood Forest, start to install the culvert, and then some special matting that will go on the wetland area currently so we can get through and do some of the work in there. Once our own work is done, the matting will be pulled, and then the boardwalk manufacturer would come in and lay this down. We had a number of calls, questions, people inquiring about the project. We received two bids. One of them was a full day late. The bid that was in on time was custom manufacturing, which is our staff recommendation, in the amount of $43,200 plus a 5% contingency for a grand total of $45,360. This would come out of the funding from the cell tower that was approved about five or six years ago, when that cell tower was put on the east side of Shady. So that's where the funding for this project is going to be coming from.
Nice-looking boardwalk, Rex. Okay, does anybody want to?
I'll make a motion to approve the order of the bid to custom manufacturing in the amount of $45,360, which includes the 5% contingency.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the $45,360 to custom manufacturing for Sherwood Forest Boardwalk. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10M, Action on West Main Avenue Trail Construction Bid.
That same morning, we opened bids for the West Main Avenue Trail Construction. The last year, we've spent moving utilities, doing a lot of studies, acquiring proper easements and right-of-way, redoing the CSMs for the properties that are affected. There's three properties. This is the, the trail addition would be on West Main Avenue from Sand Acres Drive to South Ridge Road, which is right in front of Monroe Truck. The price on this would include a box culvert crossing one of the Dutchman's Creek tributaries, as well as some retaining wall in front of Monroe Truck. We had three bidders on the project. Low bidders was Peters Construction, Peters Concrete, in the amount of $370,102.25. Staff recommendation and also park board recommendation from last week is to accept the Peters Concrete bid of $370,102.25 plus a 10% contingency due to the nature of the project for a grand total of $407,112.25. Funding for this comes out of a couple of different sources. There's money earmarked, $100,000 out of Park Development Fund, as well as the remaining coming out of TIF 4.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve the bid from Peters Concrete in the amount of $407,112.25.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the Peters Concrete bid for a total of $407,112.25. Any more discussion?
That includes the 10% contingency, just to be clear on that.
Yes. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, 10N, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Potential TID 5 Boundary Amendment. Joel.
Okay, thank you. As part of your packet and on the screen is the current boundaries of TID number five. Just for a frame of reference, this TID was created in 2015 as is really kind of a blight elimination TID. And so as a result of that, in those types of TID environments, you're going to have a high expenditure amount early on in the process of that TID because you're removing blight, and then it takes a period of time to develop increment or value within that TID over that lifespan. Back in 2018, the boundary and project plan for TID 5 was amended, and that amendment included the inclusion of the Expo Center off of Oneida Street, as well as Capital Credit Union Park Stadium, where the Green Bay Buoy play. So again, the map that's shown on the screen is the existing map for TID number five. Revenues at present for TID number five are generally trending toward meeting our expenditure commitments over the lifespan of that TID. However, there's been a number of projects over the past 12 to 18 months that have been kind of brought to the forefront but have somewhat stalled as a result of the COVID pandemic. In particular, there was a large hotel being proposed on a parcel within TID 5 that certainly would have generated some substantial increment for this project. Beyond that, things have slowed a little bit, albeit they are still approved and planning to break ground later this year. The merge development on Mike McCarthy Way is still slated for groundbreaking here later this summer, as well as the general capital project on the south side of Mike McCarthy Way, which is slated for groundbreaking in late 2021 or early 2022. In talking with staff internally, we thought of opportunities to maybe improve the outlook, the long-term financial outlook for TID number five by proposing a map amendment to this TID in order to capture opportunities for increment that is basically known, that will, again, help improve the viability of the TID. So there's a couple of challenges here. We are currently close to reaching our 12% max value capacity as it relates to TID 3, 4, and 5. And so we are rather limited to what we are able to accomplish with a map amendment based on that 12% valuation. Our initial efforts included many additional parcels that we feel maybe could be ripe for redevelopment, in particular, some properties that are along Oneida Street, close to the I-41 interchange. But based on that limitation to a total value of 12%, we were unable to do that. And so what we were looking to accomplish is to grab a couple of parcels that either have existing value that can be used as increment or known projects that will create value in the short term. So a couple of those parcels would be, the first, the Bergstrom Subaru dealership. So that particular facility received occupancy this year but isn't part of the assessed rolls until January 1 of 2022. So by creating a map amendment now and implementing that through the approval process, we can take the increment that's generated from the Bergstrom project and put it towards TID number five. There is no TID assistance associated with that project, so it's really just full increment value that's coming into the TID. The other one is the Broadway Collision Center. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we did make approvals for a site plan to improve the former ERA building, or the ERA building, into a collision center, auto repair center for Broadway Automotive. And that's going to, again, generate increment without TID assistance, so that's going to provide some financial viability to the TID. In order to reach those parcels, however, without kind of gobbling up other valued property throughout the village, we had to get rather creative with our proposal. And so we are proposing amending the map and following basically railroad right-of-way from the existing TID 5 further south. So it's really kind of this true kind of balloon string type thing, but we need to maintain continuity to the overall TID. So not an ideal scenario, but certainly lawful and allowable under the rules of tax incremental financing, so we feel confident that way. In addition to that, we're going to grab a couple of other parcels that really provide no real value to us, and one of those being the WPS site or We Energy site off of Ashland Avenue. And in doing that, we'll be grabbing a couple of other additional parcels to the west in order to reach the former Menard site. So there is an opportunity for major redevelopment on that site. At this point, the individuals that we're working with have not requested TID assistance, so there is an opportunity there to generate full increment. However, in the event that the development requires TID assistance in order for it to proceed, by amending the map boundaries, there is a possibility that it could become available for that purpose. So again, just trying to find creative ways to identify increment value to apply to TID number five to, again, over the course of the next few years until 2041, have value to help offset some of those expenditures that we've incurred early on in the TID. Again, just from a staff perspective, trying to find a creative way to make Aaron's sleep better at night.
Yeah, this looks like it came out of the Max Anderson School of TIF Development. It rivals the octopus of many years ago.
That's what I said. I asked him if he channeled his Max Anderson spirit.
We are definitely utilizing to the full benefit right-of-way, existing railroad right-of-way, and state trunk highway right-of-way.
Yeah.
Good one.
So at this point, what we're looking for is just kind of a general consent from the board that you're comfortable with this idea or this concept. If we are, then we'll kind of go through the process of preparing a formal amendment for TID number five. Of course, the Joint Review Board would need to approve that, and then village board would need to approve that formal amendment as well. But before we invest the time, energy, and resources into preparing that document, we wanted to present that to you first to get your general consent.
Well, it's innovative. It's lawful, and with that, you know, you followed a path to get where you need to go. So that being said, I'd make a motion to direct staff to come back with the formal revision that addresses the TIF boundaries as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the TID 5 amendment, to proceed forward with the formal TID 5 amendment. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
For those of you who didn't deal with Max, you missed a real treat. He ran homegrown way through the old street department garage, public works garage, so we could build a new garage with TIF money. So he was always thinking out of the box.
Very creative.
Very creative. Okay, 10O, Purchase Policy. Joel.
Okay, in your packet is a draft purchasing policy. To my knowledge, the village has not had a formal purchasing policy for certain, for some time anyway. The purpose of the policy is just to set some framework for our employees, in particular, our department heads, in acquiring or purchasing or requisiting various purchases, whether it's equipment or through the process of public construction projects. In my short time here, I've had a number of requests come to me indicating, or asks, if you will, "What is your policy on buying X supply?" Or, "What is your policy on requisiting some type of service?" And so I thought it was important to draft a policy that could then be kind of that black-and-white narrative, if you will, as to what is allowable and what procedures we should follow. Ultimately, our finance director will serve as our purchasing agent, kind of as the budget manager, if you will, over village coffers. But with that being said, there are some frameworked guidelines that all departments and staff will follow. I'm going to break down the purchases into two main categories. We have our general budgeted purchases, so these are items that are not considered a public construction project. Public construction projects that create an improvement, like a road, a water main, a new fire station, things of that nature, will generally require a formal bidding process to conform to Wisconsin state statutes. General budgeted purchases could be hiring somebody to do stump grinding for all the EAB tree removals that are completed, or to purchase vehicles to replace aging fleet equipment in public works. Those are general budget purposes. They do not require a formal statutory process. And so for And so for general purchases, we have different tiers. We have a $5,000 tier where employees are able to go out and seek out different quotes, if you will, at least two quotes to, to make sure that price checks are competitive. And then the next tier would be general budgeted purchases between $5,000 and just under $25,000. And in this particular case, or in this tier, the purchasing agent will have the approval authority to either approve, reject, or award any bids, proposals, or quotes. And the reason why we have that stopgap in there is that under Wisconsin state statutes, if it is a, a public construction project between $5,000 and $24,999, there is a posting or publication requirement for public construction projects. Don't necessarily have to go out to competitive bid, but you do need to publish notice that you are performing that work. So having that stop, stopgap review in there, that ensures that if we do end up going out and purchasing something that does fall under that category, the purchasing agent will, will be notified and will publish the proper notice to ensure we meet the statutory standards. General purchasing between $25,000 and under $50,000 will be fairly similar to any public construction project, so it will require formal competitive bidding. So specifications, bid documents, packets, things like that are going to be prepared. There will be a formal bid opening, things of that nature. And then we will also publish or, or provide any public notice as necessary. In addition to that, the, the agent will review it and provide a recommendation to ensure that funds are available within the budget for that purchase. And then the village manager would be ultimately responsible for the award or rejection of that particular purchase. General budgeting purchases, again, these are not public construction projects, equal to or greater than $50,000 will follow the same process, so formal bidding, sealed bids, public opening, advertisements, things of that nature. It will go through the same review as, as it relates to the purchasing agent and the village manager, but in this particular case, the village board would approve those purchases. Public construction projects, again, we will follow Wisconsin statutes and the requirements to competitively bid and have a, a public opening for those bids. The village board will, of course, award any public construction contract as it relates to the statutory standard. Any change orders will generally be handled by the project manager. The exceptions to that rule would be as if the change order is of a substantial nature that it exceeds the overall project budget. If that were the case, then we got to come back and get authorization from the board, unless it's an emergency situation, or it substantially changes the scope of the overall project. So the, most change orders will be seen on a pay request, so when a pay request comes before the board, you may see change order one, two, and three. Ultimately, those are generally going to be approved by the project manager because they fall within that approval authority. And so ultimately, the board will approve the pay request with the change orders as it's reflected on that. We do have a provision in the policy that allows for emergency purchases, so if there's a water main break and we need to, let's say, have a contractor come in and assist in that water main break, under those pretenses, we are able to do that. We just need to inform the board of, of those issues. We have a variety of procedures in here as it relates to receiving credit card purchases, internet purchases, and how to submit those to finance for, for accountability purposes. We have a variety of budgetary controls within the, the purchasing policy as well. And with that, I guess I will answer any questions that you might have without going through it word by word.
I'd like to ask Rex and Doug, do you see any issues that in your day-to-day work, based on these policy, it's going to put roadblocks in your guys' way?
Well, I think having the policy is, is good to have on paper. As long as, as what Joel said, I think in, in certain situations where things come up quickly, where there's not time to go and, and, you know, to a, to higher level or wait for the next meeting, as long as there's those emergency provisions that are allowed to make a project be able to continue on with, with obviously administration approval, then I, personally, I think that will, will work out for us, for me, anyway.
I agree. Right now, all of the public construction end of things, that's, that's standard policy, standard practice. We've been doing it for years, years. A, a lot of this, the great majority of this, we've been doing for years. It's just a written policy now in place. Where it gets a little sticky, and Rex touched on it exactly, are those emergency situations. You have a water main break, you have a sewer plug, you have a concrete street buckle, you, we're going to get somebody in here to get the work done because that, you, you need to get it done. And we'll get the correct person that's, we have contractors that we work with to do that. We've, we've been doing this for years in, in play. It's, it's basically just memorializing it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, guys.
I would say we also spoke about this at Finance and Personnel, and we did just kind of ask that we be a little cognizant if there were to be any roadblocks. I don't think, like you said, if we've been doing it for years in practice, we don't anticipate there to be, you know, any roadblocks or significant roadblocks. But just, you know, if, when we do put this in place, just to kind of, you know, see if there was anything that could have gone smoother, that maybe, maybe an amendment is, isn't warranted, but I think since this is basically what we're already doing, we're not really anticipating any huge, you know, debacle of any sort. So we did ask that, you know, between department heads and Joel, just to keep an eye on it and to be cognizant as the, the process goes in place. But again, we're not anticipating any major issues.
And I think that was one of the only questions that, when it first came out, as you read it, department heads here at the village for years have been able to do, to do some of the work and then discuss it, especially if it's budgeted. You discuss it with the finance director, of course, and the village manager as, as it goes through. But as it read, it read initially as though it went through the finance director to do so. And so that was the question of just, well, how does this work? Well, that, the finance director or the agent, the agent can be, is the finance director or a designee. Well, that fits all the department heads through here, so it, it worked out just fine. I, I, again, I think it's going to be something that's, most of it is, has already been in place. It's just, like you said, working through it for a while and seeing if there's anything that comes up.
Yeah. So with that being said, I will make a motion to adopt the village purchasing policy as presented, and just to, again, provide feedback as it goes over time if there are any issues.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the purchasing policy as presented. Any more comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10P, Consider Discuss Act on Ordinance 07-03-21, Amending Municipal Code Section 3-2-92, Outdoor Areas. Tony.
All right, the proposed ordinance is intended to do some grammatical cleanup and primarily to address just some inconsistencies between the sections regarding ingress and egress and the defined area of a patio and licensed alcohol establishments. A few years ago, the village, we revised the ordinance as far as what can act as a boundary or perimeter with respect to licensed patios for alcohol establishments to allow perimeter to be established by planters decorative fencing. And as a result, the ordinance that was in existence wasn't necessarily clarified to be consistent as far as the ingress and egress, or people coming in and out of those patio areas. And so this ordinance clears up those inconsistencies by requiring supervision of any ingress, egress into those areas. It also requires some greater detail as far as defining those areas and putting together a complete written and visual plan. And so it really just strengthens the ability to enforce any sort of operations concerning these licensed outdoor areas. And in addition, as I said, it also just includes some grammatical cleanup. So with that, we would just ask to have the amended ordinance approved.
Okay, I'll move to approve the ordinance 07-03-21, Amending Municipal Code Section 3-2-92, From Outdoor Areas.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 07-03-21. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10Q, 2022 Budget Timeline. Now, Joel, you get to be Greg, so.
Yeah, I don't know that, what finance directors wear. I don't think they wear plaid, but maybe they have glasses, so I guess I fit that bill.
They have a tie on.
They have a tie on, right, yeah, there you go. All right, in your packet is the proposed 2022 Fiscal Year Budget Process Calendar. Just a couple of quick things on that that I want to point out. Early on, I think Greg and I would like to have some conversations with the board, in particular at, at your next meeting in August, on some key priorities as we go into the budget year. We have three new trustees from the last kind of budget cycle, so we want to make sure that we're certainly hitting those key targets for, for all elected officials. I also plan on bringing forward to the board in September, or in August, the, the draft strategic plans, so we can kind of start talking about objectives and how they relate to the budget as well, so we'll get feedback from, from that point. And then finally, we're getting more and more information, really kind of on a weekly basis, as to the eligibility of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we're receiving. So we want to start kind of talking with the board about what some of the priorities may be for, for that particular project or efforts. And then in September, we'll have, again, probably a little bit more in-depth conversation as it relates to compensation, human capital, human resource-related matters going into the budget year, because those will have probably the most substantial impact on the overall spending plan. From their staff and, and village president, village manager will work on putting together a draft budget book, which will then be submitted to the trustees at the end of October. And then we'll begin kind of that budget hearing and deliberation project, process in November. So very similar to previous years, but we do want to kind of head off some key priority things early on in the process and having a more in-depth conversation. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have, otherwise we'll, we'll prod forward with this plan of attack.
We again discussed this at Finance and Personnel and thought it was very similar to years past with just a few added highlights, I guess you could say, but the, the timeline is very similar to years past, so I will make a motion to approve the 2022 Budget Timeline as presented.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the 2022 Budget Timeline as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10R, Local Redistrict, excuse me, Local Redistricting from 2020 Census. Joel.
All right. Couple more items, and then you can put me on the shelf. So the 2020 census is obviously nearing completion. I don't know that we necessarily officially have received the final certified numbers yet. However, with that being said, local units of government, county governments, and municipalities are on a timeline to complete the redistricting efforts as a result of the 2020 census numbers. There is kind of a three-step process in Wisconsin to complete the redistricting. The first step begins with the counties, who will have up to 60 days to enact their tentative supervisory district plan. Now, under, under law, they have no later than July 1, but obviously we're, we're clearly past that. So once those numbers become available to the county, there's going to be a very quick turnaround to get those to the local municipalities, where they are allotted up to 60 days to enact an ordinance or resolution to establish their municipal wards. Once that is completed, it goes back to the county, where they will have time to adopt the final supervisory district plan. Cities are obviously required to establish aldermanic districts within that, that timeframe as well. Under the law, there are some principles that we must follow when we complete our redistricting plan. We need to essentially ensure that our wards are compact, they're contiguous, they preserve the community's interest, or communities of interest, rather, and then they preserve the unity of other political subdivisions within the community. Specifically, our wards have to be comprised of 600, no more, or no less than 600 residents, but no more than 2,100 inhabitants. Currently with our 12 wards, we're kind of averaging between 1,300 and 1,500 inhabitants within, within each ward. So we anticipate with the 2020 census numbers that we'll be within that range of about 15, probably 1,400 to 1,600 residents, depending on the outcomes of the census. So with that, there are some very specific things that we must follow when we prepare a draft districting plan for the board's consideration. First, we have to comprise our wards of whole census blocks. Now, we are, there are exceptions to that rule, but by and large, we need to make sure that whole census blocks are making up the ward. We have to obviously take into consideration the convenience of voters, so we want to try to make sure that our wards are kept compact and that they observe the interest of, of the community and the neighborhoods in which they represent. They have to be comprised of contiguous territory, as mentioned before. We have to maintain that population threshold, and then obviously, they're going to lie within the municipality of which they are. We do have some numbering sequences that are required under the law as well, so we need to provide consecutive, unique whole numbers in our wards. As, as you know, we have wards one through 12. So those are the lawful requirements, but beyond that, there are some local considerations that we need to take into mind. And so we put together a list of considerations that we wanted to present to you tonight, primarily because at any given moment, those census, that census data could be released to the county, and then we need to begin working on our ward plan so that we can get it before you in a timeframe that's required as a result of when it, it's submitted to us. So we, we will be on a very tight timeframe, and we want to make sure that we've had kind of a, an initial discussion with the board. So our local considerations that we are requesting confirmation from the board would be, first, we want to maintain 12 individual wards. So we want to maintain the exist, existing ward count. We don't necessarily need to, because we can fall anywhere between that 600 to 2,100 inhabitants, but we feel that that 12 wards kind of keeps us in a, a sweet spot of around 1,500, 1,600 inhabitants. The population deviation will be calculated based on having 12 wards, so we're recommending, again, 12 individual wards. But we need to recognize that over the course of the next 10 years, between now and the next census, we will see additional population growth in wards three, four, five, and 12. So three, four, five, these are the wards here in kind of that sports entertainment, entertainment district, where we take into account the Element, Bohemian, the Merge Project, General Capital. That's going to create some density, that's going to create some additional population over the next 10 years. Ward 12 is the southwestern portion of the village, where we have the Highland Ridge, and then, you know, if the Lynn property were to develop, we'd have additional growth there as well. So even though our goal is, let's say, 1,500 residents or 1,600 inhabitants per ward, some wards might have a few hundred less in order to accommodate this growth in those wards over the course of time. We want to ensure that each ward will be in only one county supervisory district, so we don't want to have a split in the ward that kind of creates issues from a voting standpoint, because now we have different reporting units, we have different ballot styles, and our clerk would be very much appreciative of having a singular reporting unit. Right, Chris?
Uh huh.
Tied to that same concept is each ward will only be in one school district. Now, we only have that situation primarily in the southwestern portion of the village, but our goal would be to make sure that that district is only in one ward and it's, a ward isn't split between two school districts. Again, ballot styles, reporting units, things of that nature makes it much easier for the voters. We'll make every efforts to avoid having existing trustees located in the same ward. Theoretically, going through a redistricting process, it is possible that you could have existing trustees end up serving in the same ward. So our goal would be to try to refrain from doing that, and so that, that'll play into our efforts. And then finally, make every effort to maintain the existing ward trustee relationship. So if, if trustee Flukie's in wards 11 and 12, she would remain in 11 and 12 for the next redistricting. Again, trying to maintain that relationship that you would have with your voters. Your boundaries and things like that may change, but by and large, we will try to preserve that, that community of interest based through this process. So with that, I'm interested to hear if the board has any other considerations, but if, if these are the, the elements that we'll be working from, what we plan to do- if these are the, the elements that we'll be working from, what we plan to do is draft one, two, maybe up to three individual ward maps for your consideration when it comes due for us to, to finally adopt a revised district plan.
Joel, my only question is, right now, I definitely think with the census being done, when it was, the numbers are going to come out pretty, pretty similar, or, you know, okay. In 10 years, when all of these places have built up, established occupancy, all of those things, would you think at that time, there is a chance that each ward, it's going to have to change a little bit? You know, three, four, and five is all of a sudden going to become hugely populated. Do you see them expanding? I mean, I know we can't predict the future, but in 10 years, the residency numbers are going to look a whole lot different.
Well, I think what you'll see is that the, you know, in the next 10 years, again, we'll want to make sure that we're taking into account that population growth over the next 10 years.
Okay.
So you may see, again, speculating, wards three, four, five, and 12, in overall geographic size, this time may shrink, because they're going to take into account that future growth over the next 10 years, from where they are today.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Just a point of interest for the board. I was an enumerator for the 2020 census, so I was out collecting data for people that did not get back. And a lot of the places I went to were apartment complexes. They did not respond to the census, so that's where I was sent to take a lot of my census work. And one of the things I ran into a lot is those buildings are locked. You cannot get into those buildings anymore, and the new ones are being built that way. So all the ones down on Homegrown, the new ones here, I had massive amounts of apartments and people that lived there that I needed to get census information from. Couldn't get it. You couldn't get into the building. So if it continues that way, and I would hope that the federal government looks into that and sees a better way to be able to do that, because there's going to be a lot more people in apartments, and some of the wards we've talked about that are going to really increase. If it's done the same way, you cannot get that information, so then the numbers, like Ally said, are going to be lower, and there's actually a lot more people living there than you're going to get in your census. So it'll be interesting to see that, what happened with this census, because, like I said, I, just my personal experience doing census, I could not get into multifamily facilities to figure out who was there and who was living there.
I guess a question that I have, with the way that this is currently laid out, is I see the problem within my two wards, because ward seven, from a voting standpoint, typically comes over and votes over by Pioneer School, but for county purposes, where do they go? So they have to vote in different places?
No, they change the ballots.
Yeah.
They just make, they just get a different ballot if they're in ward seven as opposed to ward eight?
Yep.
Okay, and they vote in the same place? Okay.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to?
I will go ahead and make a motion on the proposed redistricting considerations that are requested. Is that good enough?
Okay, does anyone have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the local redistricting for the 2020 census as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 11, Items for Next Agenda. We'll have the fingerprint fee. If anybody else has anything, just give us a call here at the village. Number 12, Closed Session Items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabinnan may convene into closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, for consideration discussion action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding parcels VA-1530, VA-1555, VA-1556, VA-1557, VA-1594, and tax incremental district where competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent C, for consideration discussion action on the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, including Ashwabinnan Public Safety, related litigation, including sick leave payouts over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. C, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, for consideration discussion action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding Ashwabinnan Public Safety related litigation, including sick leave payouts where competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. D, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent G, for consideration discussion action on conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to Ashwabinnan Public Safety related litigation, including sick leave payouts in which it is or likely to become involved. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Move to go into closed sessions.
Second. Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please. President Kardowski? Yes. Trustee Paul?
Here.
Trustee Kubaki?
Aye.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
Trustee Fluky?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go into A.
This conference is no longer being recorded.